We are live streaming.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take the roll.
Alderman Demus.
Present.
Thompson. Katak.
Sue's absence revoked.
Reynolds.
Here.
Laveri.
Present.
Jepson.
Present.
Herndon.
Here.
Crane.
Here.
Mayor Grove.
Here. I'd open up the meeting with comments, public comment. Again, this is your three minutes to bring up any thoughts, concerns, ideas, suggestions. Um, we will not probably most likely engage with you as far as even answers, but maybe throughout the course of the uh rest of the council meeting, we'll be able to answer some of the questions brought up. Again, you're always encouraged to uh reach out to council members, myself, or city staff uh through emails or calls anytime. Doesn't that just be at the council meeting? Any public comments tonight?
Does the camera all fix this meeting?
Yeah, they are both fixed.
We're good.
Hello, Dina Hicks. Um, I have several times brought up the request to have packets available to the public before the meetings. When you give out the agendas, they are very vague. They don't give addresses. They don't give details. It's just an agenda. I get that, but there's no information as to what's coming up. So we used to get a very good narrative in the minutes that were um posted afterwards. Then you switch over to more of a summary. Well, now we don't even get that. From the last meeting minutes specific to Mr. Watson here, there is nothing in regards in the minutes to what was said in his presentation at all. It just said that he had a proposal from Glenstone Development regarding potential development in the former city public works building at five hundred Second Street and related matters. That's it. How can the citizens of this town have anything to say about anything when you purposely don't put anything, not just in the agenda? You won't give the packet and then now in the minutes, there's nothing, absolutely nothing. I do remember you, Mr. Mayor, had said that there's no TIP available. Well, now lo and behold, here we go on today's agenda with no information besides you're putting a a TIP in place for him. Um, okay, you put a building up for sale or auction. You no longer hold them accountable for what needs to be done. Where are we at with that? March seventeenth, um Alderman Ambassador had asked if there was any updates and you said that uh Mayor Grove stated the notice had been mailed out to the company and they had fifteen days to address the issues that were brought up. That was in March. They had fifteen days. I don't recall um anything being brought up about where we were with that. Are they fixing the Kaskaskia problems, the eight oh one Maytag? Where where are we at with that? I I I don't know if you're purposely trying to keep this vague, how I just, I don't understand why we can't know these things. You said you were gonna raise shout to surf internet about fiber optics. We never heard anything back about that. So, thank you.
Any other comment tonight? Hi.
My name is Elisa Salas. I'm a new citizen to LaSalle and I came here. Sorry for the tardiness. We went to the wrong address.
It's okay.
So I came to speak uh to show my interest on the property on the five hundred block of Second Street and right. And I want to submit a request for proposal. I'm a general contractor. Uh my husband and I just recently bought the building on one 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 Buckland, which is Buckland and First Street. So on the first floor, I have my general construction business. Second floor would be Airbnb. But this new property that kind of came to my spectrum lends itself to a lot more possibilities. Um, the reason for my interest also is because in my hometown, I was going for economic development director. Uh, I have a background in architecture. I have a degree in architecture, land surveying, civil engineering, the whole like spectrum, which is why I decided to open a general construction company. Um, with that being said, with my interest in the economic development world, when it comes to cities, I can, I have done lots of master planning for cities. I can identify where cities can improve their infrastructure internally with buildings that are not currently being used. How to rehab them in the correct way to successfully grow the city, not horizontally, but vertically. You know, to attract more businesses to town, bring more, you know, people to wanna come live in LaSalle. And, you know, I spotted this property on Buckland before I got here. Um, unfortunately, I was supposed to be here a year ago and um had to fight through stage four cancer. Sorry. And finally here and um, sorry, I didn't mean to.
Well, you're good fight.
Um, and my goal in life is even though cancer took away my opportunity to have kids and everything is to focus on what I can do with my background, architecture, design wise, how can I help improve the city? And, you know, when we purchased this proper property, our intention was like, well, let's start small, you know, get our, you know, you know, hit the ground running in a small property. Then we came across this property. And all I can tell you is my design background, I mean, on the higher end, I've been able to do four school renovations with four additions to the schools with a scale of five hundred million, right?
Your your three minutes are, your three minutes are up.
What's that?
Your three minutes are up for public comment. There's a three minute time.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Ma'am, after the meeting, ma'am, after the meeting, if you wanna talk to our economic developer, that would, I'd highly suggest that.
You're good. Thank you. Any other public comment tonight? Any other public comment tonight? Approval of minutes?
Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the uh regular city council meeting held July twenty first, twenty twenty five, placed on file. Each alderman has a copy.
Second. Motion Alman Reynolds and Alman Demus, all in favor.
Aye.
Against. Motion carried. Discussion and potential action on the following petitions.
Request for a twenty twenty five Rafa license from Buzzies, fifteen sixty nine Crozat for Operation Santa and related matters.
Your Honor, I move that we grant the request for two thousand twenty five Rafa license from Buzzies for Operation Santa and related matters.
Motion Alman Herndon, Sam Alman Crane, all in favor.
Aye.
Against. Motion carried.
Request from Jacob Green for a special event permit for a street closure and the use of city-owned property on Second Street between Gooding and Wright Streets, as well as the associated parking lot to host a car show and related matters.
Your Honor, I move to grant the request for Jacob Green for a special event permit for a street closure and the use of city-owned property on Second Street between Gooding and Wright, as well as associated parking lot, host a car show and related matters. Each and every alderman has a copy.
Second.
Motion Alman Demus, Sam Alman Reynolds, all in favor.
Aye.
Against. Motion carried.
Request from Joseph Thompson of four twenty seven Fifth Street for a caution road sign placed in front of his home and related matters.
So this person came to the Streets, Alley and Traffic Committee and gave a public comment um there. He is here in attendance with us. If you'd like to invite him to come back to the podium, if you have more questions for him, you can do so. And that will be outside of his time limit for public comment.
Does this need to go to the Streets, Alley and Traffic?
There is not, technically, we're not changing traffic. We're not changing.
We're setting a sign?
Yeah, it's basically a caution sign. So it does not have to. If you'd like to send it there for review, more detail we can.
Well, two questions. We need two signs, right? One each direction, right?
Two signs. Okay, so, well, I I I think the first thing we should find out is Jacob, can you uh, or uh Joseph, can you come back up and uh?
We have motion from Alman Demus. There was second.
Second.
Second, Alman Herndon, so uh Mr. Thompson, come back up. All in favor?
Aye.
Against. Motion carried. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. So, um.
So what kind of sign, what what are you looking for, like a?
I'm not a hundred percent sure what signs exist. I know I have seen um deaf child and and blind child signs to that, to that effect. I don't know what exists for autism, though. My son has just been diagnosed April thirtieth with autism. Uh, he's not very aware of his surroundings. That's one of the tou- tough parts of it. And so we try to keep him in the backyard as a result, but he's not the only child on the street. There's multiple children. I know there's a lot of streets with a lot of children on it. Can't put a sign on every street. Understand that. But again, we have a pretty steady flow of traffic that does come from LP uh and then route going to Route Six to the stoplights there. And uh as a result of that, we see uh a lot of vehicles and a lot of them traveling fast. And so we have tried our best to do our part. I, we we had a couple of them. They're like neon signs that you can put in front of your house. And so I'm not even a hundred percent sure that a sign that you put in is gonna be a hundred percent effective when you're looking at people that don't even follow traffic signs in the first place. So I understand the 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 um reluctance, but um we're we're just presenting it because we're we're not a hundred percent sure what to do. And we're looking at the safe, for the safety of our child. And so if there is potentially something that the city can do to help, and it's not a budget killer, and it's not a time killer or a labor killer, and uh you'd be willing to do so, we we surely would appreciate, because the width of the street is the other problem. It's not exactly a very wide road. And so it becomes a problem there simply because when you do have parked traffic, it's gonna be difficult if you're mo- if you're moving at a at a decent speed, someone steps out from behind a vehicle, well, your reaction time is gonna be a little, little bit less, you know.
To Chanick or Brian Brown, are we, do we know if that's wide enough to have parking on both sides? It's not? Or we don't know?
You can't park behind the driveway. You, you know.
Thirty feet west, thirty feet.
It's not thirty-one feet wide, no, not even close.
Okay.
The other question.
Do you have people parking behind your driveway? I heard you say sometimes you bump into them behind you.
Yes, sir, yeah.
I know situations and, you know, you can call the police and we can off, give a ticket, you know.
We have in the past. We like our neighbors across the street now, so we've.
Kind of, but sometimes you're gonna have tough love, sir.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, if you're, if it's a concern that you're bidding to council, there's a way to take care of it, you you gotta almost address it with your neighbors too.
I know, I know. I understand, you know, sometimes.
And we don't have to tell them that you called.
Sometimes the civility is a little bit more worth it, you know what I mean? But um uh outside of that, again, you know, hit, your 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 job is full. I can't manage being in your position, because I've heard already.
He's only got a couple more months. He's all right.
Well, I've heard, you know, I'm personally friends with Officer Brunel and um I know the job is not easy. And uh even small town, I think sometimes is more difficult. And so I'm not really trying to push stuff on you, just looking for possible solutions, that's all. So I mean, even if you have something other than the sign or any kind of, you know, suggestions, like you're saying, you know, talk to the neighbors about being behind the driveway. I feel bad for them because they don't really have a place. That's why I was thinking perhaps making it parking one side of the road would be a an ineffective maneuver as well. That way, you know, you have only parking one side as well. That's why we tried to expand the parking in our own yard and try to eliminate problems for ourselves, so.
Council, any thoughts?
Well, I make a motion that we re- uh refer the streets and alleys for parking on one side of the road on the four hundred block of Fifth Street.
And that'll be a chance where we'll let everybody know in that, in that whole block to come, so, because we'll we'll want as much input as we can. So what side of the street? You'd be on the north side or south side or?
There may not be enough spaces for all the cars, for the houses.
Well, that's why we're gonna review it.
Yeah.
Motion Alman Crane.
Second.
Second, Alman Reynolds, to send this request uh to the Streets, Alley and Traffic uh for next m- meeting in two weeks.
The whole issue then, right?
And it'll be at what, six fifteen?
Six fifteen, follow the sign and the whole.
Different chances to look at maybe with some remedies?
Yeah.
Maybe children replace sign?
Discussion and potential action.
So, are are, Joseph, are you uh, are you looking to have like a slow artistic child sign like?
Something to that effect, yeah. I like, I don't know what kind of road sign.
You've done special signs like that before.
Doesn't change the speed limit, but just.
But it makes them.
Right. It, you know, if if you are um, you know, if you're a, an aware driver, you see stuff like that and you say, I drove pizzas and I drove DoorDash for about four years. So I know when you see signs, it does have an impact on the way that you drive, if you actually care about the way you drive. So I mean, it it works to that effect, but when you don't care, uh you know, a sign is not gonna stop someone that doesn't care, so.
We have a motion. We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against. Um, I'm sure I would request maybe that you come here maybe at six o'clock in two weeks, because sometimes our finance meeting gets done sooner and then we'll start the Streets, Alley and Traffic right after that. And then also I would suggest maybe in the next two weeks, if you're comfortable talking to your neighbors, say, hey, I went to the city council meeting, these are some things that might come up. You might wanna have them come in and join us. Or at least maybe you have some ideas of how, what your, you know, your uh neighbors think.
Sounds good.
Is this a situation where we uh send out letters to the neighbors?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, so all your neighbors are gonna letter in the mail saying, hey, we're gonna discuss this at the next council meeting if you'd like to kinda.
Yeah, they'll get that, but it's also nice sometimes to have your face to face.
Picture of me saying Joe's taking your parking spot away.
No.
We'll all be out with torches and stuff, I guess.
All right. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Sir, you don't have to say the rest of me. If you want to, fine, but not. Have a great night.
Petitions and requests by Jerry Reynolds for variances, including but not limited to ten twenty-six Fourth Street, related to minimum lot size, minimum lot width, front yard setback, side yard setbacks, and rear yard setback. And also related to ten forty-four Fourth Street, including but not necessarily limited to front yard setback and related matters.
So this goes to the zoning board?
Correct, yeah.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Go ahead. Zoning, yeah, this goes to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, I make that motion.
Second. Motion Alman Laveri, Sam Alman Jepson, send this request to the zoning board of appeals.
I presume Alderman Reynolds will abstain.
Yep. Let's take the roll. Alderman Reynolds will abstain since this is his property. So do not call his name, please.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Reynolds, excuse me, Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Let the record show the mayor says aye, please. Reports to city officers.
Monthly police income report for July twenty twenty-five showing total fees collected of eight thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars eighty-three cents.
Your Honor, I move that we accept and place that file, the monthly police income report for July two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Motion Alman Herndon, Sam Alman Crane, all in favor.
Aye.
Against. Motion carried. Communications, nothing tonight. Bids.
Discussion and potential recommendation regarding bid award of three hundred and forty thousand two hundred sixty-seven dollars eighty cents to Gencini Excavating Inc. for Safe Routes to School Project and related matters.
Your Honor, I move that we accept the bid from Gencini, the wool bid from Gencini Excavating. Um, in my experience, Gencini is a reputable contractor. Uh, you got a great price here with uh seven thousand five hundred dollars lower than the next bid. I see no issues with this and I would like to move forward, get him started.
Second.
Motion Alman Crane, Sam Alman Herndon, please take the roll.
Alderman Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Demus.
Aye.
Appointments, resignations, nothing tonight. Standing committees.
Discussion and potential action on recommendation of finance committee regarding the purchase of emergency generators for the Civic and Cannon Water Towers from Cummins at a cost of sixty-seven thousand two hundred dollars and related matters.
Uh, the finance committee with a six to vote approves the purchase of the generators and I make that motion for the whole council.
Second.
Motion Alman Laveri, Sam Alman Crane, to accept the recommendations of the finance committee, please take the roll.
Alderman Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Demus.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Discussion and potential action on recommendation of Streets, Alley and Traffic Committee regarding adding speed bumps on Hennepin Street between MacArthur Road and Eleventh Street and related matters.
Chairman Demus, any uh recommendation on this today?
Okay, so we discussed it at the traffic meeting and uh the police are gonna do more uh patrols up there and they're gonna watch for the uh stop sign violations and uh we're gonna see if that doesn't take care of it. And then we'll readdress it in the spring if there's a issue.
You guys comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay. So at this point in time, recommendation, the Streets, Alley and Traffic is to really just monitor it, add some extra police presence. Um, we have a second to support that recommendation?
I don't even know that you need a.
Nope, okay. Perfect. Thanks, Alderman Jepson, to be there in case I needed it. Special committees.
Planning Commission recommendation regarding the request of Donald L. Ashley, trustee under a trust agreement dated July fifth, two thousand and one, and Sue M. Ashley under a trust agreement for a zoning change to M-one Light Industrial in the event of annexation to the city of LaSalle and related matters.
This planning commission recommendation is regarding a point one three one acre parcel on the south side of the former builder's choice premises. Were recently uh consented to de-annex from Peru point one three one to make it contiguous to the rest of this property. And uh and there's also on the agenda here a request to annex. This is just getting this other parcel, point one three one acre rezoned. Recommendation was to make it consistent with the uh rest of the parcel. If and when it's annexed, which is on the agenda for tonight, there were no objectors at the planning commission meeting. And the uh recom- recommendation was that the city council approved the request and it was unanimous in the planning commission. I move to approve approve the uh planning commission's recommendation.
Second. Motion Alman Laveri, Sam Alman Herndon, to approve the complaining commission's recommendation. Please take the roll.
Alderman Jepson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Demus.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye. And also indicate for the record that no one raised an objection in the planning commission.
And this is gonna be a situation for them that that space of the property was in LaSalle and Peru, so they de-annexed out of Peru and joined LaSalle now. So now if they decide to move forward with maybe selling that property or what they're doing, uh it's gonna be a little bit cleaner. So, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. Old business.
Authorization of pay request number one for Universal Asphalt and Excavating Inc. totaling a hundred ninety-eight thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars forty-four cents for work completed to date on twenty twenty-five road improvements, MFT project and related matters.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve the pay request number one for Universal Asphalt and Excavating, as read.
Second.
Motion Alman Reynolds, Sam Alman Demus, please take the roll.
Alderman Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Demus.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Engineer Brian Brown, sounds like they're getting back at it. I know it was super hot weather and then we had the rain that kinda made it a little bit wet and some locations where the water was pooling, so where we at about?
We had a paper breakdown today.
Okay.
So we're not gonna be finishing the asphalt tomorrow, but Wednesday.
Okay, good deal. Well, what's what's done so far looks really good, so it's amazing.
So what are they doing, aprons with a smaller machine or like a?
Yeah, they're doing approaches with uh a smaller uh machine. They would usually use the big machine, but since it broke down, they they typically will use a smaller one.
Gentlemen, any other old business? I'm gonna touch base on some old business I have. I was brought up, and this is something I was gonna kind of update you guys as well. Uh, we want, we talked with uh Surf as far as trying to get another internet provider, uh fiber optic internet provider. Uh, nothing really to report, because we're just doing ongoing negotiations with that group. Uh, so we're trying to see if they wanna come to the table. Again, we kind of might reach out to Genisil and Surf to see which ones kinda wanna see what's going on and and get here first. Uh, I know Surf's pretty excited about it. They're working with you right now to try to get approval to go there. Um, so uh stay tuned on that. Soon as we find more information, we'll share with you, but right now there's really nothing to report. Uh, Kaskaskia was for sale July twenty eighth to thirtieth, uh set auction, opening bid was four hundred thousand. We do not know the reserve price. Again, this is where we had nothing to do with the Kaskaskia. This is a private sale, private auction. Uh, we were watching just like everybody else. I know people ask us comments like, well, we really have nothing to comment on. Uh, it was brought about what what happens and I guess if anybody's been reading the newspaper or following along, uh we made it pretty clear, the city did, that uh no matter who purchased that building or got that building, it does make the stuff that we've been going through the uh court with, litigation with, go away. It doesn't magically make it disappear. Whoever bought that property will be responsible for the same fixes that we're expecting the CL group to do. So again, that's been pretty clear, but just to reiterate that, that is where we're at with that. Um, again, the stuff that can be fixed, could be taken care of, and I know that's something that uh we hope uh we can get somebody to look forward in doing that. Uh, it sounds like they're gonna regroup again. I, we have not talked to them personally. They're, it sounds like just from reading the paper, they're gonna regroup and see what they wanna do as far as the future of that whole block, the Kask is on. Eight oh one First Street, initially, we were kinda told in conversation that they were gonna go ahead and kinda see how the Kaskaskia thing went first before they decide what to do with eight oh one First Street. But eight oh one First Street is for sale, I believe, for around three hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred thousand, uh at asking price. Uh, there's probably at least that much from like when I taught different people to to put into the building to make it viable. So, but we'll see. Again, I know uh just seeing from what we've talked to and people, they put over four hundred thousand in the building already, so I mean, four hundred thousand is probably a a kind of a understandable price. But again, knowing that there's still a lot to do, I don't know what where that's gonna move, so um. My personal opinion is, it's it's kind of brings, it gets people running brought up, is a situation with packets. We will not hand out packets. We will not make them more specific than they are. You have a chance to talk to your alderman. If you see the initial packet and you see what's on the agenda, if you don't think there's enough uh information on that, you should reach out to your alderman and they actually have the packet so they can go more specific with you on that situation. So that's what's good about a government, it's a situation where you you get your alderman, your mayor, you let them to do the work for you. And then that's the way situation is, if you have some personal questions or more specific questions, you can reach out to them and they can go ahead and take care of it. If we gave everybody in the town, in town a a packet, we wouldn't need people up here to be representation of it, so. Um, again, people still bring that up, but we're not gonna have packets. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna happen. We have a very good situation as far as our notes. Our notes are very similar to other departments, other cities, and I'm very comfortable with uh how we document our meetings. All our meetings are, can be reviewed on YouTube. So if there's something you want more specific, which is a great thing, we've started here the last year and a half, you can go ahead and do that anytime as well, so. I'm very comfortable that we're very transparent in the city of LaSalle and we'll continue to move forward in the manner we have been. New business. Any new business? I have a couple of things, guys. I think August twelfth will be our last day of the swimming pool. I know that's the biggest question we always get is why so early? Well, unfortunately, college kids wear the lifeguards, work the concession stands, they're going back to college, they're going back to high school, sports are starting up, school starts up. So it's a situation where we know it's gonna be hot and we're probably gonna have three or four more weeks of hot weather, uh but unfortunately, uh we have to have people there to to lifeguard and to run the concessions and and take tickets. So uh August twelfth will be the last day. It's been a great year, uh not very many rainout days. Uh, we did start about a week later this year, because if you remember, back in Memorial Day week, it was pretty cold. Uh, but I think as far as talking with John Duncan, Finance Director, and Linda, uh as far as numbers, we'll be pretty similar to maybe above last year as far as the pool. And again, we all know the pool's not gonna make money. Our goal is here is to try to get as close to breaking even as possible, but it's a great amenity for our our residents.
How long's the pool been open? How many years?
I don't know.
Well, the CCC built it.
Yeah.
So what was that, nineteen twenty what?
Probably thirties.
It was in the twenties.
Yeah, nineteen twenties.
Hundred years.
And I wanna recommend and really appreciate uh uh Mayor Schleg and that group um that had the foresight back in two thousand to to renovate the pool. Uh, because there's no way we could do that nowadays with the cost. So uh they had the foresight in the the zero entry, which was good for the ADA. Uh, covered all the bases on there, because uh it would just be impossible and really wouldn't make sense financially to to build a new pool at this point in time. So I appreciate the fact that they had that uh foresight twenty-five years ago, because uh I see Alderman Jepson's son was there today.
Every day.
Yeah, so.
Anything that was built by the CCC will last forever.
Yep, yep. We're very fort- fortunate to have it. All right. Discussion, potential action on the following additional ordinance resolutions.
An ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of LaSalle, Ashley.
Your Honor, I move that we accept the ordinance annexing the certain territory to the city of LaSalle, the Ashley property.
Second.
Motion Alman Herndon, Sam Alman Laveri, please take the roll.
Each alderman has a copy of this and the rest of them.
Thank you, Attorney Frederick.
Alderman Crane.
Aye.
Demus.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing zoning changes within the city of LaSalle, LaSalle County, Illinois, Ashley.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance authorizing zoning changes with the city of LaSalle, LaSalle County, Illinois. Each alderman has a copy.
Second.
Motion Alman Reynolds, Sam Alman Laveri, please take the roll.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Laveri.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
An ordinance clarifying the street name within the city of LaSalle. An ordinance clarifying the street name within the city of LaSalle, multiple spellings.
Assume we're clarifying as, as the first choice listed there?
Correct.
Correct.
So, I make, I make the motion to approve the ordinance, Donahue, D O N A H U E, each and every alderman has a copy.
Second.
Motion, Alvin Levery, Simon and Jepson, please take the roll.
Alderman Reynolds.
Aye.
Levery.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Demus.
Aye.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the excu- execution of a tax increment finance redevelopment agreement, including but not limited to the transfer of city real estate by and between the city of LaSalle and Glenstone Redevelopment LLC and Nathan L. Watson, involving the real estate at five hundred Second Street.
Are we putting this on hold right now, or?
Yes, mayor, the.
Pass on the topic for tonight.
Yeah, pass on the topic for tonight, the developer, uh, raise some potential additional discussion items for purpose of discussion negotiation. We'll be talking about them and in there in your future, and, uh, and, and go from there.
Comfortable with that, Nathan?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Or three years, one, two, five?
Do you know what we have left on downtown Tiff, Brian Brown, offhand?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one?
Six years.
Six years, okay.
Two thousand thirty-one, thank you. Uh, just to clarify, that issue was brought up too, uh, we have downtown Tiff available to any future developers, anybody who's downtown. Uh, I guess the, the clarification was with, uh, our agreement with C L and the Kaskaski group, was we had agreement in place with timeline, in order for them to meet that timeline and get the, the Tiff benefits, they had to meet that timeline and the, the guidelines we set for it. So, uh, that situation, uh, did, did basically timeout, and we decided not to go forward with that, but there's still downtown Tiff for other development downtown, and if we have somebody who comes to Kaskaski, uh, we'd be more than willing to talk to anybody who's interested in, in bringing that Kaskaski about, uh, incentives, Tiff, whatever we could do to make it, uh, available.
And any other.
And any other, correct, but I'm just saying, uh, that was brought up that we don't have Tiff, and it was just because of that one situation where that, that opportunity for that agreement, uh, basically timed out. No need for executive session tonight, guys? You got anything? I'd like to, uh, make a personal note that, uh, our LaSalle population went up by one resident, congratulations, Alvin Crane, to your wife. Are you getting some sleep?
Oh, yeah, I'm sleeping, that's fine.
Is your wife getting some sleep? All right, gentlemen, anything from this side?
Nope.
Here? City staff, everybody good? All right. Approval of bills.
Total submitted, nine hundred seventy-four thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars sixty-eight cents.
I, I move that we, uh, pay the bills, each and every alderman has a copy.
Second. Motion, Alvin Levery, Simon and Crane, to approve the bills, please take the roll.
Alderman Levery.
Aye.
Jepson.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Demus.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Motion for adjournment.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. Motion, Alvin Reynolds, Simon and Crane, adjourn the meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Thanks, everybody.